Able to take so much information and get it into a readable, digestible PowerPoint presentation and do that all in an hour and a half. Because we could have read the two reports, it would have taken us much longer, but this really helped us. So at this point, I was, I think, I'd like just to have a little bit of an open discussion of questions that anyone would have. I don't think the intent of today was more than sharing information so that we're all on the same plate and we're looking at data that is uniform across for city and county. But I would like to open it up for questions or discussions among, among the group. So I'll just open it up at this point. If you have any questions of Heather or her team and questions that the county may have of Heather or anyone on the council and the same council having of the county, I think we can just open that up a bit. So I'll just.
Well, first thing, Scott, Heather, I'd like to thank you guys for the excellent presentation. You're covering so much in so little period of time. It's amazing when you look at it all together. I think the thing that came out to me tonight, and, or excuse me, Scott, the thing that came out to me this afternoon is being involved in the city before, but the pressure now, being involved with county, the pressure that the cities go through for growth and what it puts on like exclusive farm use and it puts on county rural property. And I look at this as more of a legislative issue that until something's done, because we know, and I think everybody else knows, that the minute we talk about bringing EFU property, you know, into a UGB, depending how much we, we know there's going to be a lot of opposition to it. And it concerns me, but as this last slide that's up there now, that it only made up if, you know, even if it's in the ballpark, that it only made up, the EFU was only four tenths of one percent. Now, I could say, well, four tenths.
If I have my numbers correct.
And I say, if you had your, if they were in the ballpark, four tenths of one percent. And then I'm thinking, well, gee, now does Newburgh, would that add another four tenths of one percent? And even if we did, for all the cities, we're not adding, when you look at EFU, we're not adding a lot of EFU. And I think, I don't want to see a lot of rural developments like we saw out here on the other side, we see out here on the other side of Hill Road and urban development in our rural area, because that development, to me, definitely should have been inside the city limits. So I hope we can at least get something through that we can get a UGB through. And the other thing I brought up probably 15 years ago is, and I was telling Scott that I brought 15, maybe 20 years ago, the fact then that when the city was talking about a urban reserve, we should have, we should have been working on an urban reserve and we wouldn't be facing a lot of the issues we face now from an infrastructure standpoint. So, but I just want to really thank you. You did a great job in the presentation, Heather.
Thank you. Just, so I also wrote a viewpoints article that's going to come out on Friday. And one of the things described in there is, I understand the concern about absorbing EFU land. And keep in mind, this number is just an equation on the greatest scenario. So this, this means no rural exception lands or anything like that, and that we actually can't do that. But I just wanted to show people the kind of perspective that we're talking about. But the other piece of that perspective is that's, so that absorption of four tenths of one percent of EFU land is to accommodate 12,000 new people in growth. Growth is going to happen. I have people ask me all the time, well, just shut the doors, we don't need to grow. It's going to happen. It will happen in McMinnville or it will happen in the unincorporated county. Right now, it's happening in the unincorporated county. And in McMinnville, we can absorb 12,000 people on a lot less land than the county can. And that's a reality in terms of, of the sprawl discussion. And so, and that's, that in essence is the philosophy of the Oregon land use system.
You know, I brought up to one of my constituents last week that we were talking about housing there. They're a McMinnville resident and he's kind of upset because of the county and what the county's doing or not doing. And I says, you have to remember, as county commissioners, we do not represent the rural residents of Yamille County. We represent all residents of Yamille County, including those people that live in the city. And I don't think as county commissioners, we can ever forget that, that smallest part of our constituents are rural constituents, largest part are, are city constituents, but we represent all constituents of Yamille Counties.
Other thoughts? We'll just open it up.
I'm going to push Ken Friday to see if he has any thoughts, because I love talking to Ken Friday and it'd be fun to hear what he has to say between all of you. Ken, do you have thoughts on the counties from a planning perspective with the UGB, the rural lands and the EFU zone lands on the outside?
Just a softball question.
Softball? We're the best.
I didn't come prepared to say anything. I, you know, I read the report. I was interested in seeing the presentation. It was an excellent presentation. For any that don't know, I was the staff person that worked on the Newburgh Urban Reserve Area back in 1995. And I thought it went very well. And it ended up resulting in several hundred acres being taken into the urban growth boundary fairly painlessly. And I am pleased that, you know, there's a proposal to do both a framework plan and an area plan. That was something that was supposed to happen with the Newburgh Urban Reserve Area. But I think both the city and the county were a little bit tired and we took a break and never really got back to it like we should have. But I think that's very valuable, because then hopefully it'd be identifying corridors where roads are going to be going and then we can avoid placing structures and things that would impede that from being developed in the future. So those are my, just my initial thoughts. I, like I said, I didn't come prepared to say anything.
Totally. Well, thank you, Heather and Tom and Chuck. And yeah, thank you. I appreciate being in the loop. So I really appreciate the full lines of communication that you are all affording us. So.
Heather, I have a question. You know, in many aspects, McMinnville has been compared to Woodburn that had a constrained UGB for many, many years, surrounded by very high-class farmlands. My understanding is that they have, they have been successful in growing their UGB. Could you share a little bit of any learnings? And again, I know you're not prepared, but I know you're connected. Could you share just a little bit of, are we on the same type of path that Woodburn is? Do we have uniquenesses that differentiate us?
I might know a little bit too much about what happened in Woodburn. I can smile, he might know it too. Do you want to answer this one, Ken?
Nope. He turned off his mic.
So I guess what I would say is, we are on a similar path in terms of Woodburn did do very, they put a lot of effort into their planning and a lot of community visioning and putting the groundwork together, much like McMinnville did all through the 90s and early 2000s. What it came down to in Woodburn, which I would not recommend for McMinnville, but if it's a strategy we have to take at the end, then we make that decision. It was negotiated. It was a negotiation in a meeting behind closed doors. That's not good, whoops, not good planning public process. And so to me, I think that's why I'm always stressing, we need to be thinking about planning for people and people need to be part of the dialogue so that we are making decisions based on the right things.
So did they do that negotiate, negotiation early on in the process? Or was that an end result?
I don't know enough about it. And I will tell you, I have, I have not talked to, so Jim Hendricks, who actually was the community development director in Woodburn, when this finally got approved, was the community development director in Redmond that hired me to go to Redmond. So I have a relationship with him. I haven't talked to him about it. This is only what I've heard in the planning circles. And it, you know, so I don't know. I guess I would just say, I, I am maybe a bit Pollyanna about things, but I would like to stay true to the process and the intent and the ideology of planning, which is about having good planning principles, making decisions for the right reasons, finding balance and allowing communities to plan within their city limits and their UGB, good city planning and not just be number crunching.
I have two more questions, but I think that Kelly had one.
No, you go ahead.
Adam, did you? You were going to say something.
Go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yep.
All right. So the question that you're allowed to laugh when you answer is just to like prep you for is, how do you balance the resistance of people inside of the city limits? That's your question with the, to increased density with the resistance of folks in the rural residential to shifting their properties to higher density with the resistance of folks who are on EFU or hillside lands with having their lands annexed and?
Yeah.
How do, how do you do that?
So it's very schizophrenic, isn't it?
Totally. And that's why I love watching you interact with everybody in the world.
So I don't know. I can tell you, and the community I came from was very collaborative. So the culture there is to get everyone around the table, put personal agendas aside and really talk about the future and what's best for the future people. And, and so that's what I've seen that works and that's what I'm hoping will work here too. If we can all come together and recognize, if we're, if we are all entrenched in what we feel meets our needs best as an individual, we will not be moving this dial forward. And really, to me, in McMinnville, we are at a critical juncture, which could change the course of time for this community. And I would much rather see us have a dialogue about what we need to do for our, in our generation to set the stage for future generations in the right way. And hopefully, people can come with that mindset.
I think, as Heather gave some examples of the Great Neighborhood Principles and some of the design standards, I just add that, again, if you're in monopoly money and looking at numbers and thinking all density is the same.
Right.
The quality of development with different densities can vary widely, where people can look at something and they don't see it as density, they see it as well-developed, you know, good development, good design. And so that, that quality component's really important in there too.
That makes sense. We, so my wife and I grew up as young adults in the inner core of Bellingham, Washington. And that's like, they look like houses, but they're really like 18 units. And, you know, they'll have like mailboxes all along the front. And the same goes for the inner core of Astoria. You know, there's multiple of those where it's, the aesthetics are great. It means the neighborhood is lively at all times and, you know, as much as you want it to be without being negative stereotypically aesthetically.
Right. And I do, I do.
There are great examples, and so I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, I do think curb appeal is important.
Yeah.
One thing, at the planning commission level, listening to people testify and share their fear and their anxiety about the development that they, that they're hearing about that's going to occur next to them. It's, it's, you know, these are true emotions and because lifestyle is changing as they know it, right? And there's a fear of that change. And I often think to myself, what, what is critical to them in terms of what they fear? Like what is the compelling factor here? Is it aesthetics? Is it what it's going to look? Because they must realize it's going to develop, it's in the city, land in the city will develop. Is it what will it look like as it develops? Is it who's going to live there, those types of things? And those, that's what we need to talk about. And oftentimes, I do think it is what it looks like and feels like for people.
Yeah.
In terms of driving through their neighborhood and where their, where their neighbors are living and what, and the types of homes that they're living in. I also think, to your point, Commissioner, in what I don't want to see happen in McMinnville is I don't, and that's, that's sort of the balance of near-term needs versus long-term opportunities. I don't want to see us get into a knee-jerk reaction of saying, moving forward, everything needs to be small homes, tiny lots, no backyards for people, apartment complexes, you know, very high density. I do think that families and people, as they go through different stages of life, are looking for different living situations, just like you and your wife. I'm assuming you were younger when you were living in that higher density living environment. Me too, right? But eventually, there's, you go into another stage of life and you want to live this way and then you go to another stage of life, you want to live that way. And so choice, I think, is still very important in terms of city lifestyle.
Yeah. The other question I had, if there's, if there's an opportunity, but first the comment, the Yamille River Greenway, just do it and I want to help you. Yeah, I'm, I'm a big fan, but you know that. But the second thing was, you mentioned the city center housing or city, is that what you called it, city center housing? Can you talk a little bit more about that? What?
Yeah.
What does that look like and what are the barriers?
So we are working on it right now. Chuck's the lead on it. And what we're looking at is anticipating our need to put like the first two buckets of jelly beans in place in the next six to seven years.
Right.
Is where is that going to go? And, and there will be a high-density respond to that, based on what's happening with land in the rural residential exception lands. So, so we talked about, okay, how can we illustrate? So again, back to that fear factor. People are like, we don't want high-density housing in the downtown area. The downtown's, we're very protective of it. It's our jewel, we don't want to change it. So the question we asked ourselves is, is there a way to bring it in in such a way where it's, where it builds on the asset rather than depreciates from it?
Sure.
And illustrate what that looks like and how it feels and whether it can even pencil out for developers. And so that's what the city center housing strategy is doing.
Okay.
It's looking at where are there opportunity sites? What would it look like if it was developed? What, what, what does a developer need to make it happen? We've had several developers look at apartment complexes in the down city center area, so the Northeast Gateway District as well as the downtown, and walk away from them because they couldn't make them pencil out. So where are the gaps? And are there opportunities for urban renewal to come in and help fund the gaps, but fund them in such a way that we're ensuring that the, what does it look like actually happens as well?
Sure.
And we're about midway through that right now.
The county's got some land.
Yes, yes.
That would know is just to throw out there, since there's a couple of us here from the county, including, I think of your beautiful building sometimes.
Everybody identifies.
And how many more stories could be on top of it? I mean, I, I love it because I have such fond memories of walking into the counter, but I bet I could put some things on top of it. Okay, that's good. Thank you for drawing a bigger picture. Chuck, do you have anything to add on that?
I don't think so, not really. I think we're about halfway through the project. We have a project advisory committee meeting coming up in a couple of weeks where we'll start to get into the findings of their research and kind of what they're doing on development feasibility and whether there's any limitations in our code now that might be preventing the type of housing that we want to see happening in the city center. Start having conversations about that with the project advisory committee and start making a plan for next steps to address that. So.
All right.
Interesting discussion.
Thank you.
Other comments? Go ahead, Wendy.
I'd just like to reiterate how much we appreciate all of the work that's been done. I know how much energy's gone into collecting the data as well as putting it together in a way that we could understand it in that brief of a presentation, even with the quantity of data. So thank you. One question that I had, and this is for Heather, I know it sounds like a lot of the challenge that we're going to face is that fear that you talked about and changing that, the tenor of that dialogue to where we're collaboratively, it's a real design challenge that we face as a community. Do you have experience with how good strategies for helping to change the tenor of that communication around this challenge in the community?
So in my experience, I, I have found that visuals are good, right? So people's fear gets magnified by their imagination of worst-case scenarios and what can occur. So we're working hard on the design standard piece of it and what would that look like? So when I showed you those pictures of homes that look like larger homes but are quadplexes or duplexes, we're going to spend a lot of time talking with people about that and showing those types of standards and talking about how we can create codes that that's what would be required rather than the, I call it the Soviet Union apartment complex, the rectangular box with few windows. So, so that we can help people understand it that way. And then also illustrate what density looks like. So there was those five illustrations that we used, both in the strategy document as well as in the presentation, that showed how you can, you know, distribute new growth around your community, either in a high-rise or in a projects over here, or distributed in a human scale way across the whole community. And the human scale well is barely noticeable, quite frankly. And so if we can illustrate that to people, it may help them.
Okay. Great. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Adam.
First, thank you for the end-up presentation and all the data that it contained. If, I guess the only thing I have concerns about is the flag in the sand and the mix that the committee put forward, but I'm willing to let that play out through the public process. And just changing that dynamic so much gives me pause on if we'd maintain the livability of our city, being that aggressive with it.
Wouldn't, would it be accurate to say that it's really just a shift to single-family home attached though? Like we're, we're moving it? Isn't that the, the numbers?
No, the multifamily goes up quite a bit too. And I'm worried about the single-family attached because our developers are telling us it's not marketing very well for ownership, so they end up in rentals. So I don't know.
Oh, I see, because it's, yeah, I was, I was thinking it was 32 and 32. It was, it's 23 now and it was 32. I just slipped in.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so we, we could have made a choice to bring it through a public process right now, planning, hearing, public hearing, planning commission process to a city council to adopt and submit to the state, because you can do an incremental, seminal. And, and I think that we do need to have a community dialogue. And through that community dialogue, we can bring back to you as decision-makers what we're hearing and invite you to participate, right? So you can hear it too. And then after a year's time, we can decide, did this hit the mark or not?
All right. Go ahead.
Well, I want to thank you for an outstanding presentation, both of you, but mostly Heather because she's.
It's all Tom's work though.
I know, Tom's worked a lot on this. And the outstanding visual aids tonight, there are several of them. I guess I'm excited about the community dialogue, because I've sat through these meetings and thought about this quite a bit. And I'm really excited to see what the community says about it. I, I'm a little worried about it too, but you know, you're not going to learn anything unless you ask, so I guess that's the important part of it. So I suspect that's the next step is the community dialogue, which I think is extremely important. And you have had great success with this. I know your initial ventures into the community were like, maybe we were lucky if we got 12 people to show up, but you're getting over 100 now, as I understand it. So I think it'll be a good process.
Yeah. And we need to decide what we're going to do. I'd rather do more than just talk to people. We need to figure, what I've learned in McMinnville is engaging people in sherriting, doing their own design, that type of thing really works. And so we're going to, as a team, sit down and figure out what that looks like, so people can get their hands dirty and try to figure out solutions themselves and test the solution and see if it makes sense to them.
Well, if there's anyone who can do it, I'm certain it's you guys.
Wendy?
I just had one other comment about something that you brought up in your findings and, and you just touched on this, Heather, in that doing, like for example, the high-density, upper-end high-density has not come here yet. Like there isn't that market for it right now. It's not the, and so it's, I like how you really evaluated what is reasonable for us to expect to be able to achieve density and have a market for it, right? Like the developers that are putting in duplexes and they find there isn't a market for it, so they still want that space. We're not the Pearl District, you know what I mean? Like we don't have the same market here that we have there. So ways to have density, but also have that diversity that will sell, that there will be a market for it, right? It's a really careful balancing act. So I liked how that was handled in your, both your presentation and in the findings, that there was thoughtfulness around that. So I think it's really well done and I'm also excited about the community dialogue. I think it'll be very informative for all of us.
Yeah, I think the committee had good dialogue about the, I was nervous coming out with a suggestion that we think a little bit differently about this than has traditionally been thought of, you know, in terms of multifamilies where you, if we need this much affordable housing units, then that's how many multifamily units we need. And, and the committee was really receptive and had good dialogue about it. It's been interesting. And so I'm, and they are meant to be a microcosm of the community. They were chosen based on, there's many people on it who hadn't been through this process, weren't planning geeks, you know, and, and so hopefully that same sort of thoughtfulness will carry through, because everybody has the same intent in mind in the end, which is ensure we maintain the quality of life we enjoy today, protect what's so unique and special about McMinnville, but we want our children and grandchildren to be able to enjoy the same thing. So they need to have a place to be and, and figure that piece out.
You know, a closing comment that I have is something that resonated with me, Heather, is when you said that we're really at a junction and we've got to be very cautious that we don't do short-term solutions, but we need to really have the long-term, the vision in, in our minds in everything we do. You know, something I talk a lot about, and I know it's very close to my heart, is the legacy and the heritage that we pick up in this community of our forefathers that have really done that type of hard work to come up with what we're sitting with today. I, I do, I do thank the council for allowing Jeff to put additional resources into planning and economic development, because those are going to be the tools, what you guys bring to the table and what we see before us right now, the time and the ability to have these very good discussions with our communities and giving us some direction. And I know Kelly's been a part of a lot of them. I've tried to go to as many as I can. I, I just appreciate listening to our citizens in a very technical area that we're trying to weave a very tough land use laws here in Oregon. And so again, council, thank you, because it's put a little pressure on our reserves and we talk about that. And this is one of the reasons that our, our funding balances aren't maybe where they need to. But if we don't put the efforts and the expertise and go through that tedious process of gathering information, we could take a wrong turn and that heritage and legacy and the visioning that's been known in McMinnville could go awry. And so I thank, I thank the group here to allowing us to do that. And then I look at each, each member of the staff and know they bring tremendous expertise. I look at the planning commission and I thank them for their hard work. It's, it's, it's a partnership. And then today, I know we've had a lot of conversations with the county, you know, but today as a group, we're coming and we're bringing our learning up to a certain level so that we're all on the same page. So thank you from that perspective. I'll go and open it one more time.
I have just one more comment. This is, you gotta get used to me around here.
No problem.
That's why our meetings go three hours.
I don't want to make yours go to midnight. You have enough of that around here. But the thing that really stuck with me, Heather, from what you presented, and maybe it was Tom's influence, but channeled through you, was you talked about the slowing growth of the community coupled with the constraints on building. And that kind of stuck with me and it made me think, oh, this is, this is something that is really important, because I recognize that in an area when you, when growth, in this community, if growth plateaus, that may not be a positive thing for the community. And so. And so diving deep into where you can build houses is, to me, an important part of maintaining that, the place where people want to live and the place where people's children want to stay or come back to. So for me, that's really what struck home.
Very good point.
Scott, can I add one more thing too?
Go ahead Wendy.
I actually wanted to, there was another meeting that we were in that I think it was the housing development in the urban core. And we were talking about how we feel the urgency, but our citizens don't. They don't realize the urgency for us to take action. And I think that's going to be an important part of the dialogue also, is having people understand that no action is not an option for us because it's coming whether we're prepared for it or not. And so it's better for us to be prepared for it. And I don't know, I'm sure there will be conversation about how we help people to understand that. You know, it's going to come somehow and we want to have some stewardship of how it impacts our community. And that's why we're talking about this. And that came up in that meeting and I thought that was really a powerful message that, like, we're so used to talking about it and we feel it and we feel that it's coming and we feel like we need to take action, but the citizens might don't feel that yet because they walked down Third Street and they wanted to stay that way.
And it's all about telling our story. And we've talked about that time and time again. We're in changing environments and we get so entrenched in this that we need to tell the story because it's a growth process. It's a learning process for us all.
And I would suggest that we need to open our ears and ensure we're listening to all different groups. So, you know, in city government, sometimes we're kind of isolated and we're interacting with the same 800 people all the time. And if, there are many people in this community who are very frustrated about the rising housing costs and the lack of affordable housing and the inability for them to find housing or their family to find housing or their kids to get into housing. And that's right now. And that is a, that is an outcome of where we're at right now in terms of our housing supply. And so they are, they are interested in seeing something happen. So I think it's, I think it's the ability for us to all come to the table and make sure we set it in such a way that all voices can be heard and we listen. All of us listen, not just, you know, us here, but you know, the collective group of people who are making decisions for McMinnville, either at the coffee shop or in the decision-making body in terms of what the needs are. And quite frankly, by state law, no is not an option. We have to plan for this.
Yeah, thank you. I talked to a lot of folks as I know around here who are living in RVs, you know, in people's driveways and backyards and in tents and have found places that the city has allowed them to park in. And I know that they also want to have a place to live in their community. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, with that being said, I'll have Rick, if you want to close your...
Okay, at this time, I will adjourn the meeting of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners.
And I'll go ahead and adjourn the McMinnville City Council. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks.